Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I'm here tonight.
And Supervisor Williams.
Hello.
All right.
Call for adoption of the agenda as presented without change.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have two sets of minutes to be approved by the board tonight. A call for a motion to approve the minutes of the January 22, 2019, meeting.
So moved.
Support.
State the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Call for a motion to approve the January 29, 2019, board meeting minutes.
So moved. Second.
State the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Now would be the time in our agenda for citizens' non-agenda comments, or public comment. If there's anybody here that would like to make a public comment, now would be the time.
Miller, I have a couple of things I'd like to clear up, if it can be. When you call in for the ordinance department, they want you to go to dispatch. Then when you go to dispatch, they send you to ordinance, up there, a lady. Then the lady sends you back to dispatch, and she says, "No, you've got to have the ordinance." I've asked your safety director, and I'm asking tonight, I would like a copy of your protocol. So instead of getting the runaround when you call in, I want to know what your protocol or your policy is. Next, get in the tax records and look around. You have a facility, Waste Management runs on Hanon Road. I have questions about that. That's underneath pollution, that particular facility on Hanon Road, just north of the railroad tracks. I'd like to know how that's being a pollution device, and it's not possibly being taxed, or we're not getting any tax out of it. When you have this facility over here at the other dump, it's purifying the methane gas off it, and it's going down to Ypsilanti and being purified, that's being purified and you're using it. And that over there is being used, it's being sold to Ford, evidently, that's what the Union Hall tells me. And I'd like to know why we're not getting tax off that from Waste Management. One, you can, the other one, you can't. Must be a double standard here around this township. I don't quite understand that. Maybe we could clear that up.
Very good. Thank you, George. Is there any additional public comments? Any, Michael Schultz, Mr. Schultz?
Mike Schultz, Deion Street. I'm always the person, I noticed the other day, I always read the little paper that comes out from Canton. And I saw the deal that came out that there's going to be a 3 percent, or it's going to be suggested, I'm just going to go into effect. And since I like to keep things a little light, if the people that pay their taxes on time are early, hey, can we get a little bit of a rebate?
Okay.
Got to have a little humor at night.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional public comments? Any additional public comment? Seeing none, we have two presentations, oh no. Let's see, I-
Supervisor.
Yes, please. Treasurer Slavens.
Make the motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
Those in favor of paying the bills again this month, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Treasurer Slavens. We have two updates this evening. First item is roads update, and Mr. Surcheck will lead us through. Now, we were going to do this at a study session a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago.
Feeling better?
Bill had a heck of a flu, and I told him, "Go home. We don't want your sickness." So he's back, and he's healthy.
But the work moves on. So, we were going to have an update two weeks ago, yep, and the work has continued. We want to update you on the major road projects, and the rollout of the local road projects, and also a brief update on MDOT. So, I will run through this pretty quickly. The major roads program, these are the projects that we laid out last April, and May is actually when we came up with this list, in preparation for the millage education efforts. We had several public meetings during the summer, and we knew that we wanted to be able to show what we were going to build, and how we were going to start in 2019. So, these projects were selected, they're all designed, they're actually out for bid this week. I'll give a shout out to Mark, our engineer, and our designer, NCI. They got all of these projects designed, approved by the county, and permitted, and they're out for bids now. We will have them before you in a few weeks, in early March, to award three contracts. I'm not going to go through all of the details of where these are. They've been on the map in the front hall for several months, they're on our website, they were in the focus last July. And aside from a few minor changes, we've pretty much lived up to building that list. The other major road program issue that we'll start this year is planning projects for 2020. We're going to start that around June or July, because as we run through the model of our road network, and select the projects for 2020, we need to start designing and permitting those in, hopefully, August of September of this year, getting ready for the next year. So, these are the major road projects. I'll point out, the two largest are Salts and Hanford. They are going to be repaired from, basically Beck all the way to Hagerty. I take that back, Salts Road is actually just past Canton Center, we're not going to go all the way to Beck. So I'll correct that on our website. But these are all out for bid, ready to construct as soon as plants open in the spring. The other component of major roads is some preventative maintenance. We've chosen these four locations for preventative maintenance, mostly crack sealing of asphalt. Cherry Hill, back to Canton Center, was done a few years ago with the school projects. Now is the time to do preventative maintenance. Same with Warren. Palmer was a significant repair done by the county a few years ago. We would like to crack seal that. And Beck Road, Cherry Hill to Ford, is definitely in need of a crack sealing. I've got a map here, which is in your presentation materials, that basically shows the different projects. It amounts to between $2.5 and $3 million worth of work, this work right here. So that's essentially the major road program. We're going to do everything we said we were going to do last summer, and we're on track to bid these jobs, and have them awarded per our schedule. And I'm sure we're going to have a lot more questions on how they progress, and this is, as I've told Pat and others, this is a lot of work in a single year. So, we're going to have, the population is going to see a lot more work than usual. We usually only have one or two jobs a year. But this is in the presentation material. Most of this information is going to be updated onto the website. Right now, I want to touch on the residential program, which we've been setting up over the past few months. We have another consultant, Spalding D. Decker, who we've hired to oversee the program, and also work on the residential portion. So, we knew last summer, we know that ultimately, the bulk of the residential program will be matched work, where we'll have groups coming in and providing a match, and then we provide the remainder of the construction. But we knew in 2019, we wouldn't be able to do that. So we did, we looked at two areas of work that can be done in 2019 without a match. The first part will be drainage and catch basin repairs throughout the subdivisions. In 2019, we intend to do that type of work north of Ford Road. Our consultant has already assessed all of the subdivisions north of Ford Road, and we have targeted areas where we knew there were drainage or catch basins that needed to be fixed. This is essentially what was presented last summer during the millage education efforts. We will continue that unmatched work in 2020 for the subdivisions south of Ford. So we hope to, if needed, touch every subdivision with some of these critical drainage areas. The other component for this year is initiating a preventative maintenance program through the subdivisions. We have several we know of, where we intend to go out and crack seal, and there's more that we're going to add. So we have a fair amount of funding for this year that we can use on these unmatched programs, and that will continue through next year. And then, I think in successive years, we'll have probably some small component of unmatched work, but we anticipate next year, we'll start to shift most of that funding to the subdivisions and the matched work. So that's the second piece up here. Under the 2020 local roads program, I gave you all a handout of a draft cover letter, and a letter of interest that we'll be distributing this week, directly to all the homeowner associations. It'll be going on the web. We'll be doing a number of different communications out to the public, including a focus article in March. But, the letter that I've presented to you is a cover letter that will come from the township supervisor, explaining how the program works, and what those resident groups need to do now, in order to move to a project. We had a program about three years ago, through the county, where we did a matching program. So that was essentially a dry run of what we're doing now. I've already talked to more than a dozen homeowner associations that are interested. In fact, I just saw a guy at dinner who said yes, they're in. So, that letter, I'll let you look through it, and we've gone through it, it's kind of a how-to for the residents. And then, attached to that is what we want back from the residents, a letter of interest. So we want information back from homeowner associations or resident groups along a particular road, that says, "What do we want to do? How much do we think we can come up with? Do we want to do a multi-year project?" And I'll let you read through that cover letter and the letter of interest. I'm sure we'll be getting a lot of questions back, but that's essentially what we intend to send out this week. We're asking for resident groups and homeowner associations to return that, if you want to be considered in 2020, we really like those letters back by April 30. That's about, that gives them about two months to think about what their project would be, how much they think they can commit. And as I detail in the cover letter, as we start getting these letters back from the individual groups and the HOAs, I'm going to assign an engineer, and they're going to call them, and we're going to talk to them, and we're going to bring them in as soon as we can, for a half-hour meeting. It may end up being a significant amount of time, but there's, we've talked about having big public meetings to try to explain this, but what it's going to come down to is, we're going to have to meet with each of these groups individually, and really see if they have a real project. So, a lot of those details are in the handouts. I do have some extra drafts that I can leave in the back. We hope to get this up on the web this week, and do the direct emailings to all the homeowner associations. So, once these go out, we're going to have a lot of, a lot of feedback from the residents. And like I said on here, we'll be meeting individually with each HOA as they come in. I've already got three I'm trying to schedule, because I know they want to do work, and we may as well just sit down. The last component is an update on MDOT and the Boulevard. So the consultant selection is complete, I participated in that at the end of last month. They have made a selection of a consultant, it's actually a team, it's quite a large team that's going to be designing the Boulevard, and they'll be awarding that in March. We'll be sitting down with the consultant to talk about their scope of work and their costing. But that's underway, and it will begin, you know, it's actually going to happen.
What happens-
Amazing to me, but-
What happens if there's a subdivision that does not have a homeowners association, or is not able to match? Will any work be done, and it's in bad shape?
Yeah, yeah, we do have some of those. John, we did want to apply some of this unmatched work to every subdivision. So we know there are plenty of subdivisions from the 60s and 70s that really don't have a strong organized homeowner association. That's why we're, that's one of the reasons we're doing this unmatched work up front, because we do want to address some of these areas that are very obvious. The, I don't have an exact answer for you, but I can tell you, when we ran the program three years ago, with the 20 subdivisions, there were at least two that really did not have a strong organized homeowner association with the ability to assess. However, they did come up with a significant amount of funds. And I know the, I know the people involved, and they put a lot of work into it, and they were able to come up with quite a bit of money. So, that's a hard thing to do. It's harder to do that with a volunteer HOA versus one that's established, and has the ability to assess. So, that's about all I can say right now. I'm sure we're going to have further discussions.
I'd like to add to that is, part of the education too, is going to be encouraging folks who are not organized, get organized. Because it's going, the funds are going to go to those who are organized first.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That's, that's not the end of that discussion.
Want to get the maximum bang for our dollar out that we possibly can.
Yeah.
We want to do as many lane miles as possible, as quickly as we possibly can.
So, we do have this ability to do some unmatched work, and I do want to, I really want to fix those drainage and catch basins, those are the lowest points in the road. And those are the more difficult things, if you're working as an HOA, when you come upon those types of issues, it may cost a little more. So we're going to bear that up front, for as many issues as we can identify, this year and next. The last item is really just an update on the communications plan. I've gone over with Amy and Kristen. We're getting ready for a big March focus, at least one page, right? At least one page we get. We've got a lot of materials we're going to be updating for the website. We've got a huge new section of frequently asked questions on all the components, major roads, MDOT, and the local roads. So, that's where we are. We're rolling along.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Thanks for the update. I had a couple of questions. One is, when ranking the projects, and we had a lot of discussion about that, I mean, we have some pretty big subdivisions, and some pretty small ones. And so, will we keep in mind that doing one project in a gigantic subdivision may not make the difference that a project in a smaller one would, and some of those bigger subdivisions need a lot of attention?
We know that, and you know, it's an interesting point, because I know of several subdivisions right now who we're actually talking to, that I presume will walk in here and want to do multi-years of projects. And yet, I know others that are quite large, where they may only be able to do a small project. So I really can't control who's going to, who's going to come in with a letter of interest. But we've talked about that quite a bit, and how much, you know, we have a 20-year millage, but how much are you going to apply, is there a certain fairness factor of one subdivision who has the wherewithal to come in year after year? So-
Yeah.
Don't have the answer on that yet, but it won't be done in a vacuum.
And also, if you take a big one, will you be breaking them up into smaller projects for the bigger?
There's a lot of considerations. Not only that, but as we get these letters in, and by the end of April, I'll have a real good idea of what the outlook is. I intend to look at all the projects that people are interested in, and really schedule them over a multiple year. I hope we have enough that we can schedule over a multiple year, because I have to consider geography, and not taking down huge sections all at once. If there's three or four subdivisions all in one area, that all want to do a project, we probably won't do them all in one year. We also need to take into account the type of material and the type of fixes that are going to be done. So we'll group projects that way.
I know, it'll never be perfect. Just two more questions. One is, if a subdivision wants to combine the work with an SAD, is that possible that they could do that, and make it a bigger project? Obviously, that would be additional taxes for that specific subdivision.
Talked, sort of tangentially about that idea, and Wendy, we've talked a little about how you could finance even a larger project.
Yeah.
But no decisions have been made. But that's, that's a big issue, both of them.
Excuse me, and then lastly, on the county roads, surface roads, we've been hearing a lot over the last year about Sheldon Road. So, I'd encourage there to be, I mean, you guys know better than I do which roads are in the most need, but the public seems to think Sheldon Road really needs some work. And I've driven on it, and I know it does, but whether it's the worst one for the 2020 cycle, I don't know, but-
Yeah, and I would imagine in the next year or two, we'll be hitting Sheldon, pieces of Sheldon. We also have to work around a significant large project next year, which will be the reconstruction of Cherry Hill, from Canton Center to Hagerty, which, we all know that section very well. And that will be quite a disruptive project, no question. But I'm, we're fully aware of those areas with Sheldon.
Whole sections of Lily as well. We reached out again this morning to Bev Watts, asking for her long-term plans.
County?
From the county, yes, I'm sorry. Director of MSD for the county. And, we haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, we want to coordinate with, we know they're going to do work next year too.
We're not going to stop pushing until we have it, so.
We're unaware of, so we need to make sure they do their work, and we stay out of their way.
We're asking for next level of transparency that has not existed previously with Wayne County, and we're going to get there, but we're not there yet. Yeah, go ahead, Emory.
So I like, so per John's question, I like on the one side, you said, "And resident groups." You know, that's the big, that's the important part, is HOAs and resident groups. Because I know, with Stephen's concern about, if you get a large HOA that wants 10 projects, but you have a small group like Copperneck that doesn't have an HOA, you know, and they only have one, how can you say, "Okay, we're going to do these 10 first, and your one later"? Maybe it's a lottery system at some point, if you get too many, you know, I don't know.
No, I think we would just schedule out multiple years. You know, I mean, I certainly hope we get enough where I can schedule out maybe two years, maybe three. I really don't, I know some of them that are going to come at us with projects, but we have more than 200 subdivisions, actually. I know most of them, or at least a lot of them, but I can't really judge if they're thinking about this.
Talk about the unmatched, so you talk about some unmatched projects. Would you consider Palmer and Sheldon, that we hear about a lot, one of the unmatched projects in the future, and also Michigan, Geddes, and Sheldon, that area, would that be under that?
You mean the intersection projects? Well, Sheldon and Palmer is well-known as a location that is warranted for a traffic signal.
Right.
And in order to put a traffic signal in, and make that intersection work, you actually need to include left-turn phasing, and therefore, you need to widen the road in each of the directions. The difficulty with Sheldon and Palmer is, on the southwest, southeast corner, there's a drain that would need to be enclosed. On the northeast corner, you have a daycare, and we don't have the right-of-way. So, I mean, I'd love to fix Sheldon and Palmer, and do a intersection improvement, and do, but I also feel that it is warranted, and it is something that the county should do. And we've certainly talked to them about that.
Right, we'd have to combine, maybe.
Right, and I'm not in a position, it's not my authority to-
Way premature, till we see county's-
Talk about those.
But I'm wondering, would that be considered, something like that, under your unmatched category, if we-
I guess if the township were decided to pursue intersection improvements in that fashion, there's certainly other ones, like I said, Michigan, Michigan and Geddes, and Sheldon is pretty awful. That would be a decision of the board to put millage funds towards that intersection. It wouldn't, there wouldn't be any matching from the residents, certainly.
No, no, not from the residents.
If we did those large types of intersection improvements, I would hope we have a significant amount of participation from the county.
Right.
And even MDOT.
Yeah, I think Tim had suggested some of that, maybe looking, but another thing I want to ask, just one more thing, for communications, are you pushing emails out to the homeowner associations then, regarding this?
All of them.
Okay.
This week, they're going to get this.
I know we do the focus, is there a way we can have people sign up, and we push the focus out also, for those who want it emailed to them? I mean, it doesn't seem like it'd cost a lot, if we had like-
Email, uh-
A listserv of the focus, so people just automatically get it in their boxes?
That, I don't know.
They could pull it offline now.
Is it available, you can download it?
But I mean, have it pushed to their email, so they don't have to go to the website, it just, because Plymouth Township does that, I just noticed that, but-
As far as the local program, this is targeted right to those groups. You know, this letter, plus their fill-in-the-blank, letter of interest at the back, so.
Michael?
From the communication end, obviously, communication is external, but it's also like, it's a two-way street too. So my question is, is what kind of infrastructure or capacity do we have for the quality control end of this, if we're going to be doing around, you know, $5 million, or, you know, a substantial amount of work? I just think about, in particular, the sidewalk program, and how much citizen interaction and participation occurs. And I can only imagine, it might be a little bit, it might be larger with this project. It's larger in scope, and maybe nearer and dearer to people's hearts. So, I'm just thinking, like, if there's like an asphalt remilling, and it's down an inch at somebody's driveway, and they want to call to talk, and figure out a way to get that fixed, who are they going to call? Do you, does engineering have the capacity to handle those, that volume? That's my concern.
On the major road projects, and on the residential projects, once we really get going on those next year, we'll have onsite representatives, who generally get to know the residents up and down the neighborhood. On the residential projects, we'll have a contract with that resident group, and we'll be talking to them quite frequently. So, when we did that program a few years ago, we certainly know how that goes. Same with the major roads. We know they sort of come out, and they want to see what's going on, so. Yep, we do that all the time, yep.
Summer?
Thank you for the presentation. Two things, can you send the PowerPoint out to the board members, so we can have-
Yes, and it'll be in the minutes for tonight also.
Thank you. And also, just as we've been talking about communications, and I met with Amy and Kristen Thomas about a week or two ago, about the communications plan, but I do want to encourage you, as you're doing the drainage and preventative maintenance work in the local subdivisions, to let those HOAs know that that work is going on in their, in their subdivisions also.
We'll be contacting them directly, yep.
We had talked at one time about having signs, so that residents and people know that their local millage dollars are at work.
We're making 30 of them right now.
All right.
Yep, we're quoting them out, and they're going to be installed, moved around, and then returned to us by the contractors.
Brilliant.
Big, 24 by 36, so they're fairly large.
60 by 30.
I'm sorry, 60 by 30, yeah, quite large.
Are there any warranties or guarantees on the road, on the construction project?
Not on reconstructions. We're doing-
How's it that the work and the material that's going to go into these projects is going to last more in a couple of days?
We'll be inspecting it, and we'll be testing the material, so, yes, that's what's most important. A guarantee, you can obtain guarantees and warranties on full reconstructions, when you completely remove the road and replace it. These projects we're doing this year are not full replacements, yeah. I know that MDOT does have some provisions for those types of warranties.
But the quality of the material, and the contractor, the quality of the contractor is within our discretion.
It is.
We're going to select the contractor, we're going to make sure the material is up to par.
Yep, they submit what are called mixed designs, and we review them, and then our inspectors and testing engineers actually test the material, in some cases at the plant and onsite. So, not a perfect system, but that is generally how road projects are done, testing at the plant and testing onsite.
Thank you very much. Went a little longer, but it's important that we go through the details and answer the questions. Now we're going to segue into a presentation by Treasurer Slavens regarding E-Utilities.
Yep, just if you don't mind passing those down, I meant to, all right.
So Treasurer Slavens, E-Utilities. So Treasurer Slavens, e-utilities, what's happening?
Well, we have just, we've had e-utilities available, but we have not installed it until, uh, just about a week ago, and we had some of the staff, um, uh, work, you know, practice on it, and everybody has found it to be quite helpful. So what is e-utilities? So it is a, um, online resource where people can view their account summary, uh, their bill, uh, analysis of both the water and sewer consumption, their account history, and they can actually click on to pay their bill if they'd like to. And you can go onto our website to, uh, get the information, which would be the, uh, the water billing. Uh, so how it works, a couple of things you need to, uh, know before you, uh, set up your account, uh, you need your account number, which is six digits, and then it, the dash is zero, zero, one, and then you also have to know who it's billed to. A lot of folks don't have their name on their bill, it's just occupant, so you have to have that too. So to create your account, you'll put your account number in and then the full name, whether it's your name or occupant. All right, and then once you click into it, um, this is the front page, and it, um, it'll show you what, how much your bill, your last bill was, if you paid it, what the amount do, your address and, uh, your account number.
This is water-specific?
Yeah, oh, this is for water sewer bills, yeah. Um, we, because we do get a lot of calls from residents, and this should be able to answer questions, they're certainly welcome to call us as well. The next toggle switch, you can check your account details, view the, uh, bills, uh, your consumption analysis and the account history. Um, and so we'll show the view bills. Um, and quite often, I'm, especially lately, I'm getting folks who have not, are not getting their bills till their delinquent bill comes in the mail. Um, so this will be great for people to be able to pull up their bill, their recent bill, print it if they'd like to and, uh, bring it in or pay online. You can either get, sorry, if you don't mind going back, that's okay, you can either, um, uh, get the current bill or up on the left-hand corner, the due date, you can get a prior bill if you'd like to look at what your other bills were, okay. And then, um, this will show you either your water consumption or, uh, your dollar amount, um, and we'll, we're gonna go online to show and live, but this just gives you an idea of the last four bills on the top, it shows you, and then the billing dates underneath, it'll give you, um, how, how much you consumed and then your charges. And then lastly, the account history, and the nice thing about this is quite often people have their own budget plan, so they might make payments every payday or once a month. This shows you each payment you've made and when you've made it. Um, when you get your regular bill, um, it does, it'll only show the full amount that you have paid, it won't show each payment that you've made. So that, that's very helpful for folks who want to make sure that their, uh, payment was, uh, shown, and so that's it. So we're gonna go online real quick to, to, um, to show you, yeah, to show you live.
A little risk here, this is potentially risky.
Um, when does bi-monthly start?
And then the bi-monthly begins in May, um, but we still have quarterly, you know, the quarterly will, the, the first bi-monthly will be, um, uh, we'll get the readings in May, but if you have a reading from April, you know, that bill will be due in, uh, June, so, now, by midsummer, everybody will be on a bi-monthly because we'll start the readings in May, uh, which will be helpful because you'll know whether you, uh, your bills are due either the even months or the odd months. You'll get at the beginning of the month of the even or odd, and then it'll be due the last Wednesday. Uh, with quarterly, we have so many folks who forget, because it's quarterly, they put it in the drawer and forget about it, and then end up with a late bill, so. Okay, so what, what, um, you'll go on the Canton website and go to water billing, you know, to, to make your login, and then you will find, right under the new, uh, changes coming, you can click on the sign in and register. So that's where you're gonna register and then, um, get your username and your password. So once you sign in, that's the front page, it shows you the bill, and, um, so we'll go into the account details. So we already saw the bill, if you want to go down to the consumption analysis, that'd be good. And then what you can do on that, now, it does show water or sewer on the very left-hand side, but we measure the water, and so, um, it's gonna give you the same consumption amount. And then if you want to look at your history, you can go back, I went way back to 2008 to get my history, so it depends on how long you've been in the home, um, to show, I don't know if you can make that, like, 2016? I think this home has, uh... And then it gives you your history, so you can see the usage, quite often in the summer month, you have higher usage, um, and that's helpful for residents to see, or if you're, if you move into the home, you know, it's the same account number, so if you move into a home, you can look at what the, uh, prior residents had, um, used, uh, each month on that. And then below, again, it shows the billing dates, the water usage. And what you can do, instead of, um, it's chart, the charts by consumption or dollar amounts, you can go to dollar amounts, but you have to remember that, you know, we, our, our water rates change yearly, so even though you're gonna have, um, it's gonna fluctuate a little bit, our water rates change year. Else, maybe we'll look at the very last page of that, of the account details. Okay, oh, that was it, okay. And then lastly on it, one, another advantage we have is for the, um, user profile, we won't click on that, but you can click into the user profile. If you own homes in, uh, Canton and rent them out, you can add to this account, um, to this login, you can add those other homes, uh, to keep track, cause sometimes, uh, the owner of the home doesn't realize a renter may not be paying their water bill, so you can keep track of that, uh, which is very useful. And so that's e-utilities, I hope you all go home and, and check it out, um, a lot of information, and I think it's gonna be very helpful for our residents, so thank you. Any questions?
Emory?
Is there some future point being able to pay this way also, pay a bill?
Well, yeah, actually, you can go in, um, there'll be, uh, you can go in through the website and pay, so yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. 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 Any other questions?
What about going like, uh, paperless, if somebody wanted to at some point in time, not have their bill automatically mailed to them?
Right, well, the goal is right now to get, you know, go to the bi-monthly, and once we have a year worth of data in the bi-monthly, people can sign up for budget billing, and then they can do that. So that's a little ways off, but yeah, that's the goal.
Excited?
Yeah, it is very exciting, so.
Thank you, Diane, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Amy, too.
Now, um, we have a resolution which, uh, for resolution in recognition of Black History Month, uh, which Clerk Seegrist has offered to take us through.
All right. Uh, Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, uh, in recognizing the significance of Black History Month, whereas the theme of Black History Month for 2019 is Black Migrations, which emphasizes the movement of people of African descent to new destinations and subsequently to new social realities, and, thank you, whereas the first Africans were brought involuntary to the shores of the Americas as early as the 17th century, suffering enslavement and subsequently faced the injustices of lynch mobs, segregation and denial of basic fundamental rights, and whereas despite slavery, African-Americans in all walks of life have made significant contributions throughout the history of the United States, and whereas, beginning in the early decades of the 20th century, African-Americans migrated, migration patterns included relocation from the rural south to northern and midwestern cities, and whereas such migrations resulted in more diverse and stratified interracial and intra-racial urban population amid a changing social milieu, and whereas racial suburbanization has resulted in stable integration and economic opportunity in Canton, and whereas the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass inspired the creation of Negro History Week, the precursor to Black History Month, and whereas the month of February is officially celebrated as Black History Month, which dates back to 1926, where Dr. Carter G. Woodson set aside a special period of time to recognize the heritage and achievement of Black Americans. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton does hereby recognize the significance of Black History Month as an important time to acknowledge and celebrate the contributions of African-Americans in the nation's history, and encourages the continued celebration of this month to provide an opportunity for all people to learn about the past and better understand the experiences which shape our township, and recognize that ethnic and racial diversity of Canton Town enriches and strengthens the township.
Call for a motion to officially have, uh, the resolution entered into the formal record.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
So Mike is gonna continue on here with the consent calendar, which will be read as a single under.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following, the board adopt the consent calendar as presented with item C1, consider reappointment of Gianfranco Palazzolo, Harpreet Singh Sachdeva, and Michael Schultz, in the audience today, to the Building Board of Appeals. Uh, item C2, consider reappointment of Greg Greco to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and item C3, consider second reading of an amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances for the Crup-Cassello family trust rezoning.
Second? Favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, moving on now to item G1, consider approval of massage establishment license for Boulevard Spa, Spa, and variance to Chapter 18, Article 3 entitled Massage Ordinance. Got a little typo there, but.
Uh, my apologies. All right.
Um, in terms of, uh, oh, you have a motion, or we're gonna go through the discussion and then, cause we've got multiple motions here, options, right? So, uh, at the end of the discussion presentation, we are gonna have a couple different options to choose from, but in summary, um, January 16th, 2019, an application was submitted to the Clerk's Office for a massage establishment license for Boulevard Spa for the remaining available massage establishment license. Public Safety indicated that the location, 6120 North Canton Center Road, was within a thousand-foot limitation, and that was added to the Section 18107, the Canton Code of Ordinances, July 25th, 2017 by this board. Corporation Council, the Clerk and the Public Safety have been asked, or tasked with amending the massage ordinance after the 2019 license was granted on November 13th, 2018. The group has been unable to implement a simple solution and requires additional, additional guidance from the Board of Trustees. While the process has been underway, uh, the application for Boulevard Spa was submitted and offered an opportunity for the board to provide such guidance on the ordinance amendment. And, uh, we have a representative, it appears, tonight, very good, uh, would you like to make, um, comment at this point?
Well, my name is Nadia Neimer, I actually run spas currently in the airports across the country, so, um, we follow a lot of the laws and regulations when it comes to state, city, um, which doesn't include Detroit, it's, it's Detroit, JFK, Dallas, Chicago, um, Washington DC, so I, I really do like to follow quite a few of these, you know, extended rules that a lot of cities have. The, the spa that I am, I am opening is within a few feet of completing that thousand-foot regulation that you guys have. We will have three rooms for the spa, you know, for massage, of which one of them will be used for facials and waxing. I, I, I don't know what we can do to make it happen, but I think it would be really an asset in that area, um, to have us there. I think we'll, you know, do really well, it's, it's pretty much to, um, push as much luxury and health as we can. We'll also be offering not just massage, but manicures, pedicures, the facials, waxings, uh, waxing and wraps. So I'm hoping that you guys will approve us.
For discussion comments? The, in terms of the thousand-foot, thousand-foot from what? Another establishment, a school, daycare in this case?
So in this instance, the thousand-foot, uh, rule involves the, um, middle school that is located, uh, off of Hanford Road, known as Discovery Middle School? So that would be the instance in this case, but the ordinance, that section, so the section of the ordinance that we're talking about, uh, does have stipulations that a massage establishment not be within a thousand feet of a daycare, school, playground, religious institution of some sort, uh, and a similar such establishment.
How many feet away is it?
The property lines touch, and.
Oh, okay.
We measure it according to the ordinance as from, from, from the corner of a property line measured diagonally to the, to, to another.
And what do we do, um, I mean, if we grant this to go under a thousand feet, doesn't it set a precedence or?
So that's what we're asking today, is for the board to set a precedence, because in November, essentially how we got here today is in November, we offered a variance. Uh, we basically, we allowed somebody to open up a massage establishment, uh, who was within a thousand feet, and the instruction was to then amend the ordinance. Um, and after meeting, after researching the type of massage and researching the ordinance itself, the, um, we ran out of any way to amend the ordinance that would have, that would, that would allow that business to go forward, the, um, so then we began to discuss the validity of the thousand-foot, of the thousand-foot rule for a legitimate business, and is it a reasonable, uh, regulation? If you all remember, we, um, initially, the thousand-foot rule was introduced into the zoning ordinance, uh, for adult regulated uses, right? Um, the state of Michigan began to regulate massage therapists, uh, at which point we no longer considered massage establishments adult regulated uses under the zoning ordinance, and we did not, uh, we did not require massage establishments to follow the thousand-foot rule, which is why we have, I believe, eight or nine that are currently outside of the thousand-foot restriction. Uh, we then removed it from the zoning, uh, from Appendix A of the zoning ordinance, put it into the massage license in 2000, uh, massage ordinance in 2017, this board did upon my recommendation, believing it was a good strategy to regulate massage establishments. We had had a series of issues with some massage establishments, and, um, and so where we're at today is, um, do we, you know, in the process of, of looking at our regulated business ordinance, trying to figure out, um, you know, what we should do, we need guidance from the board, because it was the intention of, of those of us who are looking at it to bring to the board an ordinance that did not have the thousand-foot regulation there, but we did not want to go through the process of changing that without guidance from the board, because it's a substantial amount of work. Um, but we are tasked with making the previous business compliant and trying to make sure that we protect the health benefit, you know, and, and welfare of the, of the residents of Canton Township. Uh, Public Safety believes they can do that, um, from a policing end, not necessarily from a licensing end with regard to the thousand-foot rule, and so that's my understanding. I don't know, Josh, if you have anything you wanna, to add?
No, a lot of the discussion centered around the, um, when, when you look at the regulation and you look at it in terms of what, uh, it restricts from a church to a daycare to a school, there's very little, um, places within Canton Township that, that a, the massage business would be allowed to operate and fall within those parameters. Uh, and so one of the things we looked at is we looked at where those businesses would fall. We allow 12, uh, 12 licensed massage providers in Canton Township. Uh, if that thousand-foot regulation stays in, it limits those businesses to the Michigan Avenue corridor, essentially, because, um, when we look at the township and we look at those other establishments, they're, they're, they're everywhere. So that's what we took into consideration, and the fact that, uh, from a police department standpoint, we are actively, uh, looking at businesses that we believe are, are operating inappropriately, and we, we, we deal with that through, through enforcement action.
Characteristic of myself, I'd like to speak first, and then I'll go silence and let everybody else. Um, there's a lot of things that Canton Township does that makes Canton Township unique and separates us from our neighbors. I don't want to stop doing that on any level. We've had two very negative experiences with these types of facilities in the last two years, we've had to shut them down, and for breaking the law. Now, that doesn't mean that your operation. Now, that doesn't mean that your operation will be not a legit, because I'd love to have you come up and make an investment in Canton Township and be wildly successful in Canton Township doing what you do. Because we have several very wonderful massage operations that don't violate the law and are doing a fantastic job. That being said, we created the ordinances specifically to limit the locations for a reason. There's some communities you go into, every corner is either not a liquor store, it's a tattoo store, it's a massage parlor. I don't want to be that neighbor. I don't want to be that community on any level. Love to have you come to Canton Township, just not at the location within a thousand-foot. That's my personal humble opinion.
Do you agree with that?
Absolutely.
I 100% agree. And actually, before I knew about the ordinance, I was ecstatic about the 12 license rule that you guys had. Being someone who works in the airport, you get all sorts of people, good and bad. But it, I think, depending on who you put in that position, and I can say the next person, if you don't approve me, it's how they establish their business, and what do they do to make sure and ensure those people that you hire, not just the people that come in, but the people you hire, are held accountable for these things. It's amazing, because I live in Ann Arbor, and I, I've taken five years to look for a city in a location that I've wanted, and that's why I chose Canton. It was the closest for me that I felt safer. I felt where you're not going to have as many of those people, because you're going to get those people no matter what, but it's how to prevent them and how to have your staff prevent them. With regards to me, one of the things that I've already, have already ordered for my spa is every station, manicure, pedicure rooms have a call button that goes directly to the front desk. So the minute that one of my staff members feels uncomfortable, so they don't have to have an incident, that button is pushed and the front desk handles it. So I 100% agree with you, and I don't think Canton should be one of those places, because I wouldn't want to be a part of that. But I think there's things that you, you know, as a business owner, you could do to prevent them. So.
Additional board comments, questions?
A question for you, Dr. Meyer. What is the public safety value of having the 11-foot, or the 1,000-foot rule? And the second thing is, if that rule were gone, are there any other preventative measures that could be put into an ordinance to ensure reputable massage establishments?
Michael said that the thousand-foot rule was put in when this was regulating adult-regulated businesses, and that was done by a previous board, previous director of Public Safety. So I kind of inherited this in 2017, when we changed it and we put it into the massage ordinance. I can only speak on what I believe the intent was, and I believe it's very similar to what Supervisor Williams said, and that was regulating these businesses so that you didn't, and we can name the communities where you go through that community, and you have, you know, a section of road that every, every other business is a massage parlor, or, you know, the negative connotation that once came with a massage business being around a school, around kids, around church. So where we were tasked from, I look at it, you know, the board establishes the ordinance, the Public Safety Department, nor is the department that enforced the ordinance. And so when we had the discussion, Mr. Seacrest, myself, and Kristen Kolbe, ultimately, we kept coming back to, we need some direction from the board and guidance from the board as to what this board wants to see in this community in terms of where these businesses would be located, and whether or not they want that thousand-foot rule to continue. To answer your question, from an enforcement standpoint, with or without the thousand-foot rule, we have the ability to, through investigative measures, to look at businesses that we believe are operating illegally. We have investigative measures to, to take care of that. Does it address somebody's concern that a business would be within a thousand feet of a church or daycare? No, there's really nothing without, short of that ordinance language, that we, from an agency, could do to prevent that from occurring, but we could certainly keep an eye on those businesses and ensure, through an inspection process, or through a compliance checks, that the massage establishments that are allowed in Canton Township are operating on a legal basis, and morally, and ethically, in terms of what this board wants. Hope that answers it.
It does. I guess my view would be that I'm willing to have the board take up the removal of the thousand-foot rule, but I would feel uncomfortable voting to allow this until that board made that decision to amend that ordinance. I'm sorry.
Bye.
I agree. I mean, if we have the ordinance for a thousand-foot, I, you know, I wouldn't want to change it. I don't think it's an appropriate thing, you know, to do. If we decide to change the ordinance, it's different, but, you know, this has been in the ordinance, and, I mean, you know, when you were checking places out, I don't know if you knew or didn't know about that, but, you know, it's in our ordinance, so.
Stephen?
Michael, Director Meyer, a couple of questions. Remind me in November, the reason for the other establishment that we, this came up, was it also a thousand-foot issue?
That is correct.
Okay. And that was because it was near the school also, or some?
The daycare.
Also a daycare. Which daycare? The one, the new one, or?
I believe there was, there's also a mosque in the back of it too.
Oh, there's a daycare in that center, that's right.
So to be quite honest, once we find one, we've got two applications, we have two people waiting to apply right now, who are more than likely also going to be within a thousand-foot, and.
Okay. I remember.
Based on how the ordinance is written, it's.
The other complex contained a daycare center. But the other thing I do remember was that the other establishment was not a storefront establishment. It was more of an office complex establishment. It doesn't have, like, the glass walk-in businesses, was by appointment only. I think, I know your complex, you will have a storefront look to you, to your establishment.
I believe so, but we're a little more back, but we're next to a supermarket and the shoe store.
Okay.
The other complex was also, you had to be referred by a physician to be treated.
Yeah, right. And so it's kind of funny, because three months ago, I was the only one that voted against that establishment, and, oh, yeah, Diane, you might not have been there, sorry. And this time, because of what we just, I just mentioned, that the other establishment is not a storefront establishment, nobody actually knows that it's there. It doesn't change the look of the area. I don't know if there's another establishment in the area that I don't know about, like a third one, pre-existing that these two, that causes this issue. But, and then, the other thing that was going to be looked at was, like, different types of these establishments, where there was different licensings and certifications. Can you comment on that, Michael?
Yeah, so, basically, once I, once we allowed one person to do this, the first thing I began to do was investigate the different type of massage that was discussed with the board. Once I contacted Michigan State, other individuals, what I found was that there was no additional licensing, or regulation, or qualifications that distinguished that type of massage from any other type of massage. We had nothing to substantiate whether or not it was only done by referral, and so.
But there was no way?
It was impossible to write the ordinance in a way that would allow us, the danger of exempting those types of businesses is that every existing massage establishment could easily qualify as those types of existence, and then we would have, we would have, basically, we would have written away, or legislated away, our ability to regulate any massage establishment, if they would choose to basically lie to planning.
Yeah.
And.
But, so there was no extra licensing or certification?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No, so, yeah, you know, what she basically described was essentially, you know, basically, physical therapists are physical therapists. It's, it's a different thing, and so.
Right. And what, which she talked about last time. So my feeling is that because the other location is not a storefront location, doesn't appear to make the area look like full of massage establishments, that I'd be in favor of doing this one, because we've already done one with the other one that we approved. But I would like the ordinance to be looked at. I feel like, I don't know if it's market pressures or whatever, if we're only allowing 12, I don't feel like they're all going to be grouped in the same place, or the same area of the community. They, they've been kind of spread out, although they've been more on Ford Road than maybe Michigan Avenue, I don't know. So I think what's most important to me is that the people doing the work are licensed themselves, because I think we've gotten into trouble where unlicensed therapists have been hired, in some cases, have lived in the, in the establishment, and I want, I think that's more important to me than the thousand-foot rule, so.
I'm going to speak again. We currently have 11 facilities.
Mm-hmm.
The first person that goes, complies with our ordinance gets number 12. It's easy. We don't have to change anything, guys. Why are we making this difficult? Comply with the ordinance, you get number 12.
We have a couple, so Director Meyer, do we have any, I mean, you said this was kind of already set when you came in, but do you know about other communities, like Ann Arbor, or what other distances they established, and why?
I don't, I think, I don't know if Mr. Seacrest can answer that. I know that there was some looked at, I'm, we had conversation, but I don't, I don't recall if we were able to locate any other municipalities that had as restrict, I, I don't, I can't answer that at this time.
Okay. And I guess another question is, so I noticed, so you were saying you operate airport-type massages, those are the open ones where people are?
We also have rooms as well.
Okay. So, I also know, and it might not be a connection here, but I noticed you had a chauffeur's license. But what you're opening here is just for local, you're not looking at chauffeuring anyone in?
No, no, no. I'm sorry. Chauffeur's license, because of my background in college, my family owns a daycare center. So that was kind of where, so that's kind of my background. It's not, it's not anything with that, but I've been in the industry of all rules and regulations, but that was kind of where, you know, I assisted with that when I was in college, but that has nothing to do with this. I understand exactly what everyone says, and I understand where people are saying, you know, let's follow the regulations, but I did look for spaces, I, I tell you. And it's very limited to where, from where the schools are. This was the one that I could find that was the least amount that limits me from the thousand feet. So, and, and when I say that, it's not going to be 100% massage. 75% of my services are manicures and pedicures, but I want it to be a comfortable place where you can get everything but your hair done, where you're relaxed. But I can assure you, that, you know, it's not that kind of facility, and I have seen people come into my facility that have asked for those things, and I am adamant about my reputation. I've lived my entire life on my reputation, and I don't want to bring that to Canton. But I don't, I can't say, you know, it is 11 licenses out there. I am the 12th one that, and I'm the only one that's applied first for that 12. So I, that's why I ask for that exception on this, you know, this time. Now, with regards to the other facility, it was physical therapy. Physical therapy does not, you know, it's not going to have a storefront necessarily because of the referrals from the doctors.
It was therapeutic massage.
Oh, was it?
It was not a licensed physical therapist.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, I wish I could say that was the case, but I'm not going to come up here and say, hey, guys, you know, we don't have a storefront, we're not going to do this, but it is, you know, so.
I understand.
Did you, did you, or can I offer to you, Kristin Thomas does economic development for Canton Township.
Okay.
Come sit down with her. She can help you find whatever available space is.
Unfortunately, but I have been looking, and that's where I'm stuck right now, so I really think I can be an asset to this community. I really do. In Ann Arbor, by the way, in, because I have, Ann Arbor doesn't have a limit on how many licenses, they don't have a limit on zoning, because in the massage industry, it's not about, there is, there's facilities I've read about, and they're, and they're disgusting, but they don't limit because of where schools are these days. There's a lot of families that are, are moving to different areas of schools, so places are opening for those moms and dads that are, or even executives that are on the go, so.
If I can, just, because my fidelity in this moment is both to my opinion as a board member, but also as the person tasked with enforcing the massage establishment ordinance, I wear two hats. And I have yet to speak on my official, or my, my, my trustee position, right? But I'm just talking as somebody who was tasked by this board to bring a varianced massage establishment into compliance with the ordinance. I can tell you that I need to know if this board wants to have the thousand-foot rule, and we, because we approved a massage establishment condition, on the condition that we would, we would change the ordinance. And I have lost options on ways to rewrite the ordinance to make the one we approved in November compliant. And this is why I asked for this to come before the board today, because if we keep the thousand-foot rule, we will have a legal non-conforming massage establishment, which is fine, if that's what we want to do, but we approved the 2019 license on the condition that we change the ordinance. And I can't change the ordinance unless the board gives me an indication of where they are on the thousand-foot rule. So that's just, puts me in a position where I have an ordinance I can't write unless the board is very clear about where they fall on that. From the other standpoint, where our ordinance fits with other communities, I can tell you that in most communities, or all, for that matter, that I have found, they regulate massage establishments through the zoning ordinance as a, I believe, a commercial enterprise, so, and no different than any other form of commercial enterprise. So I know of us being the only people who have a restriction, or a limitation on the amount, and the only people who have the thousand-foot rule, primarily because it was my brainchild to bring the thousand-foot rule into the massage establishment, license which is now coming back to, to get me. But anyway, continue. That's the answer to your question about what other communities are doing.
Did you discuss as a, your, as your role as a trustee, what your opinion was?
Uh, no, I was, I have not yet.
Oh, okay.
Now, or actually Jeff Goulet would like to make a comment.
Yeah, Jeff, I know exactly what Jeff's going to say, but go ahead.
Well, you know, you know, and I think Josh brought this up, and I think Mr. Seacrest brought this up earlier. The thousand-foot rule was basically a carryover when, when the adult-regulated massage parlors were, and they still are regulated as an adult-regulated business for those people who are unlicensed. Think the difficulty here is separating those legitimate massage establishments who are licensed from the illegitimate ones who are not licensed that are still regulated in the zoning code as an adult-regulated business. The thousand-foot rule is almost impossible to meet unless you're on Michigan Avenue, and that's what the board decided for those adult-regulated businesses back in 1990 when we established the adult ordinance. So they wanted to place them in a, in a very restrictive spot where they could be controlled, and they were very limited locations. By zoning, we can't write a regulation legally under the Zoning Enabling Act, which totally prohibits a use from existing within the community. So, I mean, that's where the board has to weigh, is like, you know, you know, one option may be to reduce the licensed establishments, reduced in a thousand feet to something other that makes sense for our major commercial districts. You know, almost all of our commercial districts along, like Canton Center Road and Ford Road, but up to residential, and those uses, we have a lot of schools, a lot of churches, a lot of other uses. We have a lot of daycare centers in our commercial districts also. So the makeup of our commercial districts and how they, you know, interact with our residential districts, it's pretty, you know, it's, 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 it's pretty intimate. So I think it was, it's going to be very difficult for any new legitimate licensed massage establishment to meet the thousand-foot criteria. One idea may be to, instead of, maybe we change the way that we measure the thousand feet. Maybe it's front door to front door, instead of property line to property line. So there may be some other ways to measure the thousand feet that may be, if the board still wants to institute some type of separation policy, you know, for the licensed massage establishments. The thousand feet's not going away for the adult-regulated business use. That's still in the zoning ordinance as part of the special land use criteria. So what we're talking about is just a separation distance for licensing purposes for these licensed massage establishments. So I don't know whether that helps you with the history and how to, and whether it helps separate you, or give you some more ideas on how to proceed to help Michael out, but I just thought for the, you know, for the record, to get the whole history of the difference in the two uses out there on the, on the table might help you understand a little bit better.
So Jeff, just understand, would this business be regula, I'm sorry, adult-regulated or not adult?
No, she, she doesn't fall under adult-regulated.
And how many of the massage establishments in our community do you know would fall under that? Are they not licensed, or are they all licensed?
All of the 11 that we have are licensed massage establishments. We have no, the board has never approved a special land use for an adult-regulated business. Gotcha, okay.
John, do you want to say something?
Right now, we have an ordinance that prohibits the establishment of these within a thousand feet. If we were to approve this request, we'd have to grant a variance, is that correct?
That is what's before us, correct.
Are we going down a slippery slope? What about, once we, if we were to do it for the? Are we going down a slippery slope? What about, uh, once we, if we were to do it for this organization, it sounds like a business, excuse me, uh, something you, you might wanna do? What about the one that comes in next week?
Well, so this would be the final massage establishment. So I would no longer be in the business of providing massage establishment licenses. So I would tell them, thank you for applying, uh, we have reached our cap.
Unless one left.
And, and to be fair, what I'm, what we're do, I'm basically, I'm doing two things right now. One, what do we do in this specific situation? And then two, what does the board want me to do with the massage establishment license? So yes, and it, we would be providing a variance. The, the whole reason we brought the variance forward is because the recommendation from Corporation Council, Public Safety, and the Clerk's Office was going to be to remove the thousand-foot rule. So what I'm asking you is, is since we haven't written it, and I don't want to rewrite an ordinance that's going to fail at this board, I need you to tell me, do you like the thousand-foot rule? And if you don't, awesome, we'll remove it. But in the meantime, we have an applicant, and if we're going to remove the thousand-foot rule, do we provide one variance, a one-time variance? And then the inspiration for the variance was the variances that we use for the zoning ordinance, which we do with, with regularity.
And this, to be fair, would be the second establishment that we've issued a variance for, right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
But basically, since Jeff already covered, you know, we don't have any adult-regulated, and that would still require the thousand-foot limit. It seems that there is that difference there. So I'm, I would agree with even making it, if we want to stick to thousand feet, making it door-to-door rather than, than property-to-property if we want to stick with something like that.
We don't know if that would qualify, but we could look at it to see if it's a potential.
Do, do we have a measurement in this particular case on how close her building is to the school?
Is that something Public Safety can do? I believe we use a software, right?
Well, we can measure it off the aerial, but, uh, yeah. I, I just don't know whether or not that was looked at, whether or not, uh, one of the code enforcement officers, we can look at it.
And just real quick, then, is that something that has to be changed, the measurement?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, in the ordinance, okay.
Right.
But as of right now, we have what we have.
Correct.
Can issue a variance.
Right, and we wouldn't, yeah, yeah, this entire discussion is, is all predicated on the fact that we have to.
I understand that, and we had this discussion, I wasn't here, but apparently a few months ago, and nothing's changed, so I understand.
Let's go right to left and kind of just share our final thoughts on the ordinance. So Mike has clear direction from us individually, what our opinions are on that topic.
Well, can I speak as a trustee?
Please do.
Okay. So as a trustee, I think, um, you know, it's important that we have this conversation. I have kind of in a lot of ways led the crusade, if you will, to try to bring into compliance and in a sense, bring accountability to massage establishments. I've spent a significant amount of my professional time as the clerk, uh, but also as a member of this body, voting to deny, um, you know, deny those requests to, you know, whenever we pull someone's license, whenever zoning removes their certificate of, of compliance, whenever a building takes their C of O because they have engaged in, in illegal or illicit, in illicit behavior. Uh, so I am, this is near and dear to my heart, and I understand that oftentimes perception is reality, right? And people will oftentimes choose the perception of security or safety over actual security or safety. I think it sometimes leads us as a country, as a state, and probably as a township to make maybe not the best strategic or smart financial decision sometimes. We allocate resources based on perceived threats and not always actual threats. Um, I do think that there is no benefit to limiting a valid, uh, operating commercial business that is in compliance with the laws, uh, in limiting, uh, how far they are from a daycare or a school. I don't see any value in that whatsoever. I also believe that the thousand-foot rule has not assisted any investigations in shutting down the four massage establishments that we have shut down since I have been clerk, or the two the year prior to me being clerk. The thousand-foot rule played no role in the investigation, did not allow any information or do anything at all. I believe that that was Public Safety who was able to do that. I believe they had no, uh, and so to that end, I think, um, I would like to look at the ordinance, bring in, um, bring in hours of operations, bring in random, uh, compliance checks with the ordinance so that Public Safety has the ability to make sure that the ordinance is, as it is now, is being enforced and that we can, if somebody is outside of the, outside of the law, we shut them down. And we shut them down the same way that we've been doing that. And I believe Canton Township is already getting a reputation as a place that you would only want to go to if you're trying to conduct a legitimate business. I think we've made it very clear to anybody in the industry what our stance is on that. Uh, and then additionally, I also believe that the regulation of having it capped at twelve is a great protection and keeps the, you know, the aesthetic of the community protected. So I would be in favor of eliminating the thousand-foot rule, and I would also be in favor of granting this ordinance, this variance.
So let's kind of go right to left here. Final thoughts for Michael.
Okay, so basically, since we covered that we are covered under the adult regulations ban, I mean, we still, and we also require that licenses are required by establishments such as before as today. And if there is illicit behavior, licenses will still be pulled. Um, I'm okay with, um, going less than, you know, not having a thousand-foot rule. If we have to go back to it, I assume we would, but like Clerk Seacrest said, thanks for doing that work and that explanation, Jeffrey explanation, that the thousand-foot rule hasn't helped us with the previous establishments that we've had to shut down. So I would be okay with going less and granting less.
I agree.
My perspective, um, I'd like to remind everybody that this is identical in nature to the property we have at Lotson Ford Road where we're currently in Circuit Court and Federal Court with the property owner there who's conducting a not-compliant used car business slash, which is an eyesore on our eastern border, right? I think everybody would agree that our ordinances that we have established and the zoning rules that we have established are to prevent that type of operation being there, which is why we're currently in the court system with them. I see this as being no different. I can, I'm very comfortable being the minority and saying stick to the thousand-foot. Clearly, it's, it feels like you're gonna have your votes, Michael. That being said, if there's a door-to-door thing by changing a couple of words in the existing ordinance that allows you in, you know, if you can squeak in that way.
I would follow, from door-to-door.
God bless, I mean, that's great, but, you know, that's something, Michael, I would take a look at is, you know, a couple word change to the existing ordinance to allow her to squeeze in to be number twelve. But outside of that, I'm sticking to the thousand-foot. Diane?
And I, I agree, um, we need to change the ordinance, obviously. Um, we have to go with the ordinance right now, though, you know, getting rid of, it sounds like it's okay to get rid of the thousand-foot, uh, rule. I don't have a problem with that, but we have to follow the ordinance. Um, or certainly going door-to-door, I don't have a problem with that. But, you know, we've gotta stick to the ordinance, you know, and it's, it's unfortunate that you've signed a lease because we'd love to have you here, you know, in Canton, so.
Well, I would say that things change rapidly in Canton Township. Um, you know, this, we've already had a vote where we allowed a, a variance of less than a thousand feet. So to say we haven't, and now we're gonna stick to it, is, is to me, not the right thing to do. Um, the other business that, Pat, you referred to, I don't believe is in court with us because of a thousand-foot rule.
No, 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 different set of rules, but it's the same thing.
Right, but it's a similar set of rules, it's not following.
Aesthetics of the community is my point.
And that's the same, that's the same as this. It's also, if they, if an establishment like this or others like it aren't following the rules, we will shut them down. And that, that's the rule, that rules that we need to be following. We need our businesses to act legally and maintain licenses. I mean, if you bring in, uh, unlicensed therapists, I agree, Michael, we need in the ordinance strength for Public Safety to come in and shut you down because you, you've broken that rule. You know, I voted against this last time because I didn't want to change the, uh, provide a variance until we changed the ordinance, but that didn't happen. So now I'm ready to move forward and grant this, um, businessperson in our community a variance. And yes, I would like to, Michael, change the rules so there's strength in making sure what's really important is what, what our businesses follow.
Summer?
Um, I, I think what I said before was, um, I think we should look at changing the thousand-foot ordinance, the thousand-foot rule, I'm okay with that. Um, I think until we do, um, we shouldn't allow, um, the variance. But I also think that if there's a way that she can squeak in, if there's the door-to-door requirement or something, I'm fine with that.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion then, if that's all right.
I can make, I have enough information to make a motion, and I can tell you, before I do, obviously, we'll look at the door-to-door and see if that language makes sense for the ordinance change. And we'll try to have an ordinance change before the board, uh, soon. You know, as soon, as soon as practically, as practically possible. All right.
That being said, the, uh, motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the request of the petitioner to approve, uh, the variance of, to the massage license, uh, to ordinance to allow the granting of a 2019 massage establishment license subject to passage of public safety inspection and obtain a certificate of occupancy to, um, BLVD Spa.
Second. Uh, there's been a motion and a second. I'm gonna call for a voice vote going left to right, so there's no confusion. And for Clerk Seacrest on the, the vote. So Summer, lead us.
No.
Aye.
No?
Oh, yes.
I vote no.
Yes. So what is that?
So the noes have it, it is, the motion fails. My apologies.
But if we can get you in under door-to-door, I mean, tomorrow, I want an answer on that, somebody.
Because we measured it door-to-door when I asked, Michael, um, when it was line-to-line, it was within a variance of about thirty feet or so, but door-to-door, it would have fit over a thousand feet.
I'm gonna call for a motion to modify the ordinance to go door-to-door.
That is not allowed.
No, sir, why, because it's not on the agenda?
Uh, under Michigan law, to bring in an ordinance amendment, it must be in writing, it must be posted, it must have first reading, second reading. Unfortunately, we have another applicant who will probably be before this body shortly.
Understood. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, item G two. Consider award contract for 2019 tree maintenance project to Frank's Landscaping and Supplies.
Mr. Supervisor, this is, I move to award an extension of contract for 2019 tree maintenance to Frank's Landscaping and Supplies for a total amount not to exceed eighteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, in summary, Planning Services received four qualified bids, 2018, for tree maintenance. Work concludes following maintenance work on Canton property in or in public right-of-ways in various locations throughout the community. Cultivation, fertilization, mulching of the trees, stake removal, watering. The lowest qualified bidder was Frank's Landscaping and Supplies, um, as stated here. And mulch, uh, seven hundred and twenty-seven trees were identified. Um, they'll remove stakes, straps on the hundred trees, and water a thousand trees. The 2018 invitation to bid allows the contract to be renewed for a second and third year at the same unit price. Is there any discussion, conversation? No?
Just, is there a reason it's so large? I mean, it's, it's pretty low compared to the others, almost half. Do you see that usually in this?
Well, depending on the services provided, the tree companies are all over the place. Uh, Frank's has done a great job for us, so we'd recommend extension of their contract and approval of the P.O. for this year, so.
No further questions, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, item G three, consider award contract for the 2019 tree removal and pruning project to Owen Tree Service, Inc.
Supervisor, I move to award an extension of a 2018 contract for the 2019 tree removal and pruning to Owen Tree Services Incorporated for a total amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars.
Second, very similar contract, uh, 2018, removal and pruning, public right-of-way. The 2018 bid allowed for the contract to be renewed for a second year at five percent increase, agreeable to the township and the contractor. The lowest qualified bid, bidder was Owen Tree Service with his bid of thirty-six thousand five hundred, plus five percent for the 2019 year. Are there any questions for Jeff? Done. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
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 Consider budget amendment to tree fund resulting from U.S. Forest Service grant of eleven thousand one hundred.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to authorize acceptance of a State of Michigan Community Forestry Grant and a budget amendment as follows. Increase revenue, uh, to the state grants account in eleven thousand one hundred dollars. Increase expense to the salaries and part-time wages account of ten thousand dollars. And then an increase expense to the fringe benefits, FICA, account in the amount of one thousand one hundred dollars.
Planning Services and Leisure Services has long recognized the need for tree management plan to manage all the major public street trees, open-grown park and public facilities trees and public wooded areas. As Canton continues to grow, the increase in tree infrastructure, a tree management plan can be integrated with the city works and all the utilities, allowing comprehensive management of all infrastructure. A tree inventory is a first step to enable the development of a tree management plan. The inventory will include species, size, planting dates, and conditions. And this allows us by this, if we accept this, to receive the grant, uh, from the state, I believe, is that accurate?
National Forest Service goes through the state, D E Q.
Very good. Allows us to receive and hire an intern to do the inventory work for us this spring, summer. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G five. Consider approval of budget amendment award purchase order contract to Northwest Consultants, Inc. For construction administration services and testing of for payment improvements at the Division of Public Works facility.
The former two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment. Increase expense, uh, into the capital outlay building and improvement account in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars. And increase expense to the capital outlay buildings and improvements, other account, uh, in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars. And a decrease expense to the transfer to fund balance in the amount of twenty-seven thousand and sixty-five dollars.
Okay, as part of Canton Township's effort to effectively manage and maintain facilities, staff has determined the concrete pavement at public works facilities failing and improvements are necessary. What this allows us to do is hire the engineering firm to do the testing and inspection services on our behalf for the work that's being performed at the public works facilities throughout the community. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state, please state aye.
Aye.
Second motion?
Mr. Supervisor, I further move to award a purchase order contract to Northwest Consultants, Incorporated, under the existing master services agreement for an amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand and sixty-five dollars.
Second. In favor of the second motion as presented, uh, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G six, consider authorization of 2019 fiscal year specialized services operating assistance program agreement with SMART.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the fiscal year in 2019 specialized services operating assistance agreement between SMART and the Charter Township of Canton for thirty-one thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars and authorize the township supervisor to sign the contract on behalf of the township.
Good. By approving this, um, action, it allows us to receive the funds and sign the contracts. Are there any questions?
Um.
Stephen?
So this is the annual SMART one that we do, is that correct? So, um, we're, this is us opting out of the, it's what we usually take, right? The four hundred thousand and?
There, there are two grants that we receive by opting out through SMART, and this is one of those grants that we're accepting. So then later in the year, there'll be a second one that'll count.
Okay, that's what I was remembering it.
The later one is the bigger ticket item, and I asked, I did ask, and I don't know if I shared with the board. Um, I asked John LaFever, what is the, you know, savings to date? And it's in the ten, ten, between ten and twenty million dollars we save taxpayers by doing what we've been doing, how we do it. Significant dollars, so, but that'll be future.
Yep, I got you.
Yeah, what will the additional funds be used for? I mean, just more rider ships?
This is the same funding that we receive every year for the, for the program that we have in place. So it offsets our costs that we pay to Nankin Transit for the services that they provide. And then the remaining portion of it is paid for through.
Item G7, consider approving one-year contract for public safety legal services.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a one-year contract for public safety legal services with Michigan Police Legal Advisor Group in the amount of $30,000 to be paid in monthly installments of $2,500.
Last year was the Department's first year of the contract with Michigan Police Legal Advisors Group, validating the importance of legal services and consultation specific to police and fire agencies. In addition to training and policy recommendations, this contract provides 24/7 access for legal advice for management of all public safety-based scenarios and potential legal implications such as employee management, critical incidents, and legislative actions. And I can tell you that it has been beneficial and it has freed up Kristin Kolb's ability to deal with the very heavy workload that she continues to be burdened by. So this is an extension of that. Are there any questions for Director Meyer?
Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G8, consider waiving bidding process and approve the purchase of Motorola 800 megahertz mobile and portable radios.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and approve the purchase of 15 Motorola mobile and portable radios from Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $76,848.84, utilizing E911 funds.
Public Safety Department is requesting purchase seven Motorola APX 6500 mobile police radios and eight Motorola APX 6000XE portable fire radios. Due to the necessity of the continuity in radio equipment, purchasing the same radio as currently owned is imperative. Therefore, the Department requests to waive the bidding process and purchase the above model radios from Motorola Solutions, a sole-source vendor, for a total of, as stated here, $76,848.84.
Support.
Oh, it was already supported, sorry.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G9, consider request to purchase service agreement for Stryker Power Load Stretcher Systems.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of a seven-year pro-care service agreement from Stryker in the amount of $33,121.20, utilizing funds budgeted in the 2019 fire budget.
I use my support here instead. Okay, support.
Do we note it? Thank you. Item, we appreciate that. Fire Department is requesting to purchase a seven-year pro-care service agreement from Stryker in the amount, as stated, to protect, maintain, and repair six power-load stretcher systems that were purchased in 2018. Are there any questions for Director Meyer? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I believe that concludes our formal agenda this evening. Is there any additional public comments? Any additional public comment? Seeing no public comment, any staff comments? Seeing none.
So we have the Citizens Academy coming up again, I see. Are you getting a lot of applications?
I'm glad you brought that up, because I completely forgot. Yes, the Citizen Police Academy, the round of applications has been posted on our website. We are getting a lot of interest, and that does fill up pretty rapidly. So I would encourage any residents that are interested in going through the next Citizen Police Academy to get on, fill out an application, and come join us. You will also be seeing, in the not-so-distant future, the applications going out for our youth police academy. This will be the third year that we've done that. It's a week-long youth public safety academy that allows the youth within the community to experience the things that a police officer would do and then also firefighters. So they spend some time over at the fire stations doing, doing fire activities and learning, and they come out with a CPR certification. And then they also spend some time with our officers and learning that as a career choice as well. So it's, it's something that we're very much committed to as we look to build our recruiting and retention efforts within the organization.
So you're, would we be able to go as a board, then? I know if you get full, we were, you had offered that last year. Since you, you know, you don't want us to take, we don't want to take any citizen slots.
Yeah, so last year, I think we had over 80 applications, so we turned down quite a few people. Same offer goes, if any of the elected officials want to pop in, we'll get the schedule out to the elected officials. And if there's a certain topic that interests you, or you would like to pop in one night and just see what it's all about, we certainly welcome you to take advantage of that. And then also, the ride-alongs are always available.
I would just like to take this opportunity to acknowledge that the Secretary and the Clerk's Office, Joan Lager, who is a longtime Canton resident, is retiring after, I believe, 13 years. She is also one who does the beautiful minutes. She drafts a lot of the minutes that we approve here as a body, so she'll be listening to this tomorrow and hear me thank her for her service. And Canton Township has been well-served by her, and congratulations on, on your retirement, Joan.
Any additional board comment? Seeing none, call for a motion to close.
So moved.
Second. Those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night.